Good evening and welcome to the September sixteenth meeting of Troy City Council. I'm Marty Baker, President of Council. Please silence your electronic devices for the duration of the meeting. We'll begin with the invocation by Mrs. Robin Oda, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Lord, we thank you so much for the beautiful end to summer that we're experiencing, and we're so thankful for all the activities that we have in our community to enjoy. We also pray, Lord, for each of our city's staff and our laborers and our first responders. We pray that you would keep them all safe and healthy as they go about their daily duties here in our city. And, Lord, we're just thankful that we can gather together in this meeting and talk about opinions and the pros and cons of the different decisions that need to be made, and we're thankful for those freedoms in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Present.
Mr. Phillips?
Here.
Mr. Kendall?
Here.
Mrs. Oda?
Here.
Mr. Twist?
Here.
Mr. Lutz?
Here.
Mr. Heath? Mr. Swazer?
Make a motion to excuse Mr. Swazer.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Twist to excuse Mr. Swazer. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer is excused.
Make a motion to excuse Mr. Heath. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Twilliger to excuse Mr. Heath. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Heath is excused.
We have a few presentations this evening. We will begin with Mayor Bemish presenting the recipient of the Rumpke Look Who Is Recycling Quarterly Reward Program.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, Rumpke is very big into recycling, and the city of Troy certainly follows suit with that. I've asked Jerry Mullen as our street foreman if he would come up, and as he comes up, would Richard and Carol Moore please come forward? And I want to share a little bit. We all know how important recycling is to our environment and our future generations. And normally, I would talk about that, but I think they've said it best. We always ask the question, this is the third quarter recipient, and we've asked Richard and Carol the question, why do they recycle? And here was their answer, and I think this was a good one. To help the environment for future and present generations. I would also like to see the bin filled every week, knowing that material does not go to a landfill. I think it's the right thing to do for everyone, and the new recycling bins make it easy for citizens. Thank you, Rumpke and the city of Troy for the rewarding recycling effort. And I want you to know, I think that's wonderful. We have a presentation we'd like to make to both of you. And Jerry, I'd like for you to hand that to them in appreciation for your efforts and the many other efforts that others in this community make, and you certainly are a beautiful example of that. Thank you very much.
And now, we would like to recognize the outgoing and incoming members of the Mayor's Youth Council, Mr. Kerber and Mayor Bemish.
I'll be up again with grant of your assist. I have orange bags here. Let's start with our outgoing Mayor's Youth Council members. We've been very fortunate over the years to have youngsters, fifth and sixth graders, who are picked by their schools and their principals along with their family, and they represent not only themselves and their school, but our community, and they've done it so well. And as they outgo, we also like to recognize their efforts as well. Now, many of them are home, remember, they're junior high, they either have some sporting event going on or they're home doing their homework. But I do have a number of people, I want to introduce at least their names to you. If they're here, would you come up? And there's a certificate, I'd like to shake your hand. And then also, we have an orange bag of a little parting gift that we'd like to share. First of all, Andrew Gandhi, come on down, please. I'm telling you, these people have contributed both years, and any event, they were there. Andrew, here's your certificate, and if you'll just stand, thank you, Andrew, for all you've done. Aiden, would you come forward, please? Aiden Scott. Aiden, thank you so much for your efforts. Lucas Hotchkiss. Lucas, thank you so much for your contribution. Thank you. I'm going to name the other ones, and if somebody's out there and comes forward, that'd be great, too, but we also have some others that have made up the Mayor's Youth Council for the past two years. Cole Vostick, I'm going to make sure they get their certificate. Lola Gasser, I'm listening. Carly Halter. Johnny Crewley. And Luke Carnish. Give them all a round of applause. I should also mention that this is not just a fifth and sixth grade, we have great advisors. Grant Kerber, who's our law director, and his wife Beth is two of our advisors, and Tim Davis and Carla Davis is the other two advisors, and they work with this group throughout the year. So congratulations, we'll make sure the others get their parting gift and their certificate. Now, Grant, I'll turn it over to you, and we have some new introductions. Thank you, guys. Thank you.
And I just want to sort of reiterate what the mayor said, this seventh grade class was a great class. They were very committed, Troy's going to be in good hands if we have kids like this helping out the community. But it's my privilege now and my honor to introduce our new members of Mayor's Youth Council. These are fifth grade students, and they come from the various schools here in the Troy area. So I'm going to go ahead and start off, and when I call your name, please come forward. I think they're out in the hallway. Can't go from there. All right. All right, how about Aiden Francis? Skyler Combs?
Cyrus.
Oh, Cyrus, I'm sorry. Skyler Shepherd, that's why I was. Skyler Shepherd. Kaylin Hedricks. Chloe Dodd. Brad France. Anna Carroll. Ethan Barhorst. William Twist. Molly Rumber. Carson Sentman. And Slime Rajab. All right, well, I'm pleased and honored to introduce to the Troy community, this is our fifth grade class, we're going to have a big two-years together, we're going to work hard and play hard. So this is, all the parents, why don't you stand up there for a little bit? I know some of your parents are taking pictures. All right, let's give them a round of applause.
Thank you. Mrs. Knight, please read a summary of the minutes of the September third meeting of Troy City Council.
Minutes of Council, September three, 2019. Committee reports Finance Committee recommended legislation be prepared, accepting tax rates to be levied as certified by the Mammoth County Budget Commission. Law and Ordinance Committee advised of a notice of a transfer of a liquor license from Tokyo Pay King Restaurant to the North Market Cafe. Safety and Health Committee recommended legislation be prepared, stating the city's support of the 2020 census. Resolution Number R thirty-nine, 2019, authorizing tax levies as determined by the Budget Commission, was given first reading and adopted. Resolution Number R forty, 2019, supporting the 2020 census and the partnership with the Mammoth County Complete Count Committee, was given first reading and was adopted, following various comments. Council adjourned at seven twenty-five PM.
Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
Move, we accept the minutes as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Severt to accept the minutes. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Minutes are approved.
Our first committee reports this evening are from the Community and Economic Development Committee and Chair, Mr. Bill Twist.
Thank you, Madam President. We have two. The first one is the Final Record Plan Development for Troy Christian Schools. This committee met on September thirteenth regarding the recommendation of the Troy Planning Commission that the Final Record Plan of the Plan Development Residential at seven hundred South Dorset Road submitted by Troy Christian Schools Incorporated be approved. The new Arbor Gas Performing Arts Center will be located within this Plan Development. The Final Record Plan conforms to the approved general plan and the final development plan. It is the recommendation of this committee that the recommendation of the Planning Commission be supported and that legislation be prepared, accepting the Final Record Plan of the Plan Development Residential at seven hundred South Dorset Road as submitted by Troy Christian Schools Incorporated. And that is respectfully submitted, Tom Kendall, John Swazer, and myself as Chair, William Twist.
Are there any questions or comments from council? You may continue, Mr. Twist.
All right. The second one is the Final Plat Recommendation for Heritage Village at Troy Country Club Subdivision. This committee met again on September thirteenth regarding the recommendation of the Troy Planning Commission that the final plat of Heritage Village at Troy Country Club Subdivision be approved. The final plat is in general conformance. Sorry, my iPad went to sleep, sorry. That the final plat of the Heritage Village of Troy Country Club Subdivision be approved. The final plat is in general conformance with the preliminary plan. The plat contains twenty-two building lots, and it is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared, accepting the final plat of the Heritage Village at Troy Country Club as presented, including the dedication of Right-Away. And that's respectfully submitted by Tom Kendall, John Swazer, and myself as Chair, William Twist.
Are there any questions or comments from council? Thank you, Mr. Twist.
Yep.
Mr. Tom Kendall has our next report from the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Madam President. On September thirteenth, committee members Swazer and Kendall met to review the request that some excess public property be declared surplus and offered for sale. In that surplus, Troy Fire Department EMS-related equipment be donated. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared to declare the listing of the vehicle and chairs as surplus and authorize the sale of the items, and declare that the fire items as surplus and authorizing the donation of those specific items to Edison State Community College, Pickwell, Ohio. And this is respectfully submitted by Mr. Severt, Mr. Swazer, and myself as Chair of Finance.
Are there any comments or questions from council? Thank you, Mr. Kendall.
Thank you.
We now open the meeting to citizen comments. At this time, does anyone in the audience have any questions or comments related to the agenda items this evening? If so, come to the microphone and state your name and address. There is a two-minute time limit at this point in the meeting, and Mr. Kerber is our We have no resolutions tonight, so we will move on to ordinances and ask Mrs. Knight to please read ordinance oh thirty-one, 2019.
Ordinance Number oh thirty-one, 2019, ordinance accepting the Final Record Plan of the Plan Development Residential at seven hundred South Dorset Road for Troy Christian Schools, Inc. This has been recommended for approval by the Troy Planning Commission, first reading.
Are there any questions from council?
Move for suspension.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Twist to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Move for adoption.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Twilliger to adopt the ordinance. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read ordinance oh thirty-two, 2019.
Ordinance Number oh thirty-two, 2019, ordinance accepting the final plat of the Heritage Village at Troy Country Club Subdivision in the city of Troy, Ohio, and dedicating Right-Away. This has been recommended for approval by the Troy Planning Commission, first reading.
Are there any comments or questions from council?
Move for suspension.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Twist to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Move for adoption.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Twilliger to adopt the ordinance. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read ordinance oh thirty-three, 2019.
Ordinance declaring, ordinance Number oh thirty-three, 2019, ordinance declaring municipally-owned personal property as no longer needed for municipal purposes, and authorizing the sale of such excess property and the donation of surplus fire department equipment. This was reported on this evening, this is the first reading.
Are there any comments or questions from council? Move to adopt.
Second.
Oh, move to suspend, sorry. It's been moved by Mrs. Oda and seconded by Mr. Twist to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Move for adoption.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Kendall to adopt the ordinance. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read ordinance oh thirty-four, 2019.
Ordinance Number oh thirty-four, 2019, ordinance to accept the application for the annexation of certain territory containing eighteen point one oh two acres, more or less, in Staunton Township to the city of Troy, Ohio. This is the final acceptance of the annexation known as the Riverside Drive Properties Annexation, first reading.
Are there any questions from council?
Move for suspension.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Phillips to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Move for adoption.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Twilliger to adopt the ordinance. Is there any further discussion? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
That completes the business portion of tonight's meeting. Mrs. Knight, are there any communications or announcements?
No, there are not.
Mayor Bemish, do you have any comments this evening?
Well, I've already used a lot of the time. I would just say our Seward Johnson visitors are leaving us tomorrow morning, and this is, they've been here for a number of months, and I think people have appreciated seeing them around town, but they do have to go back to their home or to a new destination. So they leave us tomorrow morning. That's it.
Director of Public and Service and Safety, Mr. Titterington.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just two quick announcements. First of all, a reminder that Halloween Trick or Treat will be on October thirty-first from six to eight. The other is to let everyone know that we are in the process of finalizing our leaf pickup schedule. I know the summer is going quickly, and we expect the leaves to start coming down in a few weeks. And so unlike last year, we intend on starting that process later. Last year and the last several years, we've started early and the leaves have taken their time. This year, we'll wait another month and wait until November, and they will probably start falling in October. We will monitor that, though, and we will be ready in case that does happen. But our schedule will be premised on a November start, working later and through the end of the year and possibly into January, depending on Mother Nature. That's all I have. Thank you, Madam.
All right. Thank you. City Auditor, Mr. Fergie, any comments this evening?
Thank you, Madam President. I have nothing at this time.
Thank you. Director of Law, Mr. Kerber.
Madam President, I have no comments this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Just like people to be aware that there's a Meet the Candidate Night held on October sixteenth at seven thirty PM at Troy Junior High School. Everyone is invited. This is sponsored by the Leadership Troy Alumni, and we thank the city schools for their cooperation with this event. Are there any comments from council members this evening?
Madam President?
Mr. Twilliger?
I would like to compliment the Hainer Association and all those groups who are affiliated with them on this Porch Fest that happened on Saturday. That was a neat event, and I think it could be the start of something really important for our community.
Thank you.
Madam President, I have a question.
Mrs. Oda?
I think most people are aware that one of the statues was damaged. Do we have any idea what happened with that statue?
We have theories, but nothing, nothing firm on it.
So they are, are they all guarded tonight?
Uh, no.
Would love to think that they could sit there.
I mean, there will be routine patrols going by. What we think happened was that someone, it was one of the statues.
Right.
Wasn't multiple, and we think someone just either leaned on it, pulled on it, or somehow just kind of pulled it over and bent, bent the statue over. It's unfortunate, it was one of the last days of the sculptures, but I, we will be surprised if it cannot be repaired back to normal.
This is one of my favorite events, bringing the statues. Sorry to see that happen, but we've enjoyed them this summer.
Any other council members? Any comments from city staff this evening? Any comments from anyone in the audience?
Bradley Baron, one oh five Westwood Drive. I'd like to have a couple of comments tonight. First of all, I'd like to thank the members of Troy, is it Festival of Nations Incorporated, Mayor Bemish, that puts on the Festival of Nations, is that correct?
It's the Mayor's International Council.
Thank you, thank you. I had the chance to attend it this year, and I know it's been a couple of months ago, but this is the first time I've had to be up, I had the chance to be up here and while I talked about it. It was a very well put-on event, as usual, and I enjoyed it very much. Spent a lot of time at the Japan booth, of course. Didn't wear my yukata tonight, I probably should have. Mayor Bemish saw me, I bought a yukata, which is a summer kimono from the Japan booth, and wore it around the festival a little bit. Have it at home now. Should have wore it. I just think it was a very good event. And I echo the comments from, I believe it was Mr. Twilliger, Porch Fest was wonderful. I didn't spend as much time as I would have liked to because I had a ticket for the Renaissance Festival two weeks ago, and I used it this weekend. So I was down at the Renaissance Festival, had a good time there. Now I have a negative I would like to talk about, and y'all council members are off the hook on this one. As we all know, there's been a spate of vandalism that's been going on around Troy. I see it every time I look at the Troy, Ohio Citizens Facebook page. It's sad, really, because as I look around the city that I inhabit, I frequent, I can't help but think how beautiful it is. And we're lucky to have a beautiful downtown like we do. And the youth that were standing up here tonight as part of Mayor's Youth Council deserve to have that downtown kept beautiful. They are the future of our town. After all of us in here are passed away and gone, they are going to be the keepers of what we leave them. We shouldn't leave them something that's vandalized, I think y'all would agree with that. And I think if anybody that hears this or sees this tonight on television, or wherever you see it, knows who is doing this, I want to challenge you to turn them in. Enough is enough of this. The police are looking for them, and I'd like to see the citizens look for them, too, because this is your town, this is our town, really. And we should make sure that it's kept beautiful for the future generations. And one more thing, I just have a question for you, Bill. Was that your son up there tonight on the Youth Council?
Yes.
So he'll be occupying your seat one of these days, right?
Maybe.
Well, it's a fine, it's a fine program. I wish we would have had something like that. Of course, I lived out in the country, but I wish we could have had something like that on the county level when I was growing up, because I think it's a great thing that you have. That's all I have. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who has any comments?
Lester Connor, twelve ten South Place Street, Troy, Ohio. If maybe three weeks ago, three meetings ago or something like that, I asked Mr. Titherton about moving the man taking the photographs up here. And at that time, he said, well, they're too heavy. We'd have to get a crane and fourteen people to move. And I seen in the paper, they moved the one down here where the history is, a woman sitting on a bench with a tow motor and a guy sitting on the bench with the woman. So I don't think that was a proper or accurate answer that you gave me, Mr. Titherton, Mr. T. But now my, what I'm really wanting to talk about is, I don't know if you've seen Sixty Minutes. I think it was two weeks ago, and they had an article on there about recycling. And I'm all for recycling, Mayor. I think it's great. We've got too much crap in this world, anyway. Anyway, they said China isn't taking it anymore. And they asked him, well, who's taking it?
He said two other countries, India, and I forget who the other one was, but he said, are they recycling? He said, well, I hope they are. So my question is, or my thought, or my concern is, we're paying $17 a month for recycling, is it really getting recycled? Or is it just being thrown away somewhere?
Oh, that wasn't a rhetorical question, I apologize.
I know you was in a daze.
Well, I, 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 I just thought it was rhetorical. So in our conversations with Rumpke, of course, our contract requires that they actually recycle the materials that are eligible for recycling. It is true that China, which, which had been the primary recipient of recycling materials around the world, has cut back on the amount of recycling that they will take, has to do with machinery, manpower, and demand for the recycled goods, and so as a result, Rumpke has become more diligent in patrolling what they allow in our toters, and there have been numerous times when we've had to re-educate, and we will continue to re-educate our, our citizens as they go forward. But we have no reason to believe that Rumpke is not following through. They do some, if not a lot, of their own recycling production in-house, they do have some facilities that do that.
I was just wondering about it, you know, I mean, $17 is $17, thank you.
Thank you.